Okay, at 7:30 we'll call a meeting's order. The location of the fire factor doorways are in either end of the hallway to take emergencies. The AED machine hangs across on the wall across from that door. He's hopefully not needed. Please turn off all cell phones and pings. Clark, please take the roll call.
Norman Baz.
Here.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Here.
Ed Hay.
Here.
Carol Roth.
Here.
Jonathan Vogler.
Here.
You've amended approval of the October 18th, 2021 meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the October 18th, 2021 minutes as written.
Got it. Motion made by Rocky Ellsworth, seconded by Carol Roth to approve the minutes of October 18th, 2021, and present. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Carol Roth.
Aye.
Jonathan Vogler.
I'm staying.
Okay, we'll move down to our public hearings. Would you please show the proof of publication? Okay, thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
All right, we move clerk's analysis. Chris Wegman, 29 Drake Road. Do you like to tell the board what you would like to do?
Yes, Norman would. I'd like to erect a eight-foot fence on the back of my property with a chain link four-foot fence running from the southern side all the way to the driveway, of course, meeting the house on either side. Chain link fence didn't require any kind of variance, but the eight-foot is beyond the six-foot allowed, and I would like it to be stock eight for the privacy of my family and to keep the dogs in my yard. So I don't gotta put them on a chain every day.
Okay, this is solid, the back fence would be solid.
Yeah, it would be solid wood, eight-foot, and then four-foot chain link all the way back to my house.
That's perfectly.
You standing?
Oh, you're asking for the two-foot.
If I have a normal one in the back, just like, there's all these slopes in my dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, six-foot. Yes, right, six-foot gets followed up pretty quickly by the ditch. So an eight-foot affords me some privacy, yes.
Is there any other questions from the board? We were there Saturday, and that ditch is pretty deep.
It is deep. You guys did a hell of a job on it.
I agree with you.
The water's flowing pretty good.
You're going to put it or would like to put it up?
Yeah, it's going to be up bang from the ditch, you know, closer to my house rather than further. So away from the lot line, my tension.
Any further questions?
I object to that.
Just a minute.
All right.
Okay, hearing, any more from the board? Open up your public hearing. Anyone wishes to speak for or against this proposal? Please give your name and address.
Oh, yeah, my name's Gary Goodwin.
I'm Mike Turkat, 41 Hidden Creek. And I'd like to point out, if I was in Mr. Gilmore's spot, I certainly would be doing the same thing. There's a privacy issue beyond the normal neighborhood issues with a level three sex offender in our neighborhood. He's well beyond his rights to have a privacy when this guy's property back court hits red light right to hit property.
I never bothered anybody.
Wait a minute.
And having said that, if any of you had family and wives and children in his position, in fact, anybody in our neighborhood, you know, this would be a perfect example for a variance to be approved.
Okay, all right. Thanks, thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think that's a good reason to approve it.
Please give your name and address.
My name's Gary Goodwin, 30 Hidden Creek Lane. I lived behind this creek for forty-some years, and he's done everything possible to piss off all his neighbors, including Danny next door. He puts his stuff up against the fence.
What's that got to do with that?
Wait a minute, I'm talking here.
Wait a minute.
I'm talking.
I will not allow this to get out of hand.
We'll tell him, don't mean.
Wait a minute.
So anyway.
Wait a minute. One gentleman will speak at a time, please. Go ahead, sir.
So this guy here doesn't have any respect for any of his neighbors, none of them. He puts stuff up against Danny's fence, and I says, hey, he says, you're putting up stuff against Danny's fence. He says, if Danny ain't got enough balls to say something, then I'm not gonna do it. Wait, wait, am I talking?
This is defamation.
Is okay if I finish?
This is defamation.
No, one to a time, please.
And then, talk about defecation of character.
No, it's the wrong word.
Well, one to a time, please. I'll take your disc.
So then, in the back, he builds, he wrecks the ditch. Everybody's getting stuck in the yard with all these stupid ideas that he has. I'm getting stuck, Danny's getting stuck, the girl next door's getting stuck, the sheriff's getting stuck. Everybody's getting stuck. I go and tell him, he says, it's okay. He says, it's not, it's not my fault. He said, my thing is working good. The town has to come in and build a whole new ditch because of what he did. And then now, he's got a 12-foot-high fence in the backyard that, where there's nobody bothering him, now he wants to build another fence. It's a bunch of stupidity. The guy doesn't have a brain in his head. Keith basically, you know, come over and look, and I says, that guy is an engineer. He says, yeah, bad one. He thinks everybody likes him, but they don't. They talk about him something bad for other stupid stuff. So if you wanna go ahead and give him another stupid idea, go ahead.
Are you through?
Yep.
Are you through?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Okay.
You may.
Yes, you may respond.
Okay, thank you, Norman. Of course, this gentleman has a right to speak his mind, whatever he likes to say. He's locked himself in his house and made a whole new world and reality for himself. First, I want to thank you for coming in tonight, speaking on my behalf. He's been a problem in this neighborhood for quite a few years. I've got proof. And for every time he's bothered me or he's called the police on me every time since.
I had to call the police.
I'm talking now. Mr. Goodwin, you had your opportunity. February the 5th, 2020 is when I started documenting the level of ignorance this guy spewed in my neighborhood. And he hasn't bothered just me, he bothers all my neighbors.
No, he doesn't.
He doesn't get along. I've told him many times, if you want a, if you want a good neighbor, be a good neighbor. He fails to be able to do that. So I basically just leave him alone because he can't be reasoned with. As you can see here tonight, he's spewing all kinds of nonsense, name-calling like a child. I'm very surprised, actually, I give him a lot of credit for coming here tonight because he never really goes out after dark. So I really don't, really didn't want this fence for privacy from a felon, all right? He doesn't bother me in any way. I don't, I ignore him completely. What I'm trying to keep is him from bothering my dogs, my dogs from running the neighborhood, mainly containing my dogs so that they have the full use of my yard. This document was something to share with the police. He's been, I've let them know many times, every time he's called the cops. I've never once called the cops on this man. He calls cops on me every time, and then I gotta deal with them and tell them how petty.
He didn't have a reason to call the cops on me.
All these calls are.
He didn't have a reason to call the cops on me. I didn't do anything wrong for him to have the cops on me.
I will not allow this.
All right.
Like I said, I feel sorry for him.
Please keep it down because this name-calling back and forth does no one a bit of good.
I understand.
And if there was, I believe if there was a better form for which to voice this discontent, and if some of my neighbors would complain as much as I do about this gentleman, maybe something could be done, maybe it's not within the laws to do something about a bad neighbor. Certainly not the crux of what I'm here for tonight. I'm truly just trying to have my own privacy. Obviously, two gentlemen that don't get along very well. He should be here supporting an even taller wall if all these gripes he says are true. If they're true, he should want anyone to look at me any more than I want to look at him. So I can't see why you'd have any issue with a 10-12-foot fence.
Your whole yard.
Looking to see in my yard.
You got the worst house in the neighborhood. It looks like a junkyard back there.
What did I just get through saying?
Well, he was talking to me, kind of.
If this continues on, I will ask you to leave.
I won't reveal about all this more, but it's what.
I will not put up with any of this. This is not, I'm not in the, we're not in the business on this board to have neighborhoods fighting. That's out of our.
I'm not either, sir.
We're dealing with a gentleman who would like to put a fence which six-foot is perfectly legal, and he'd like a two-foot for added guard or safety for his dog. Some dogs can jump pretty high, and that's all we're here to discuss. I've seen the ditch. I have not seen anybody stuck in that ditch. The ditch is, it's got water in it, I was there Saturday. It's kind of, yes, Chris.
If I, you know, you're right, this is the crux of the meeting, I'll keep it on that focus. Since I'm presenting something which I'd like you to approve, and Mr. Goodwin's here to disapprove, can we just find out in one sentence what the disapproval is? And does it have any grounds about me not getting an variance? What is the foundation of you not wanting me to have a 10-foot or eight-foot fence?
He's putting up what he already put up. In two or three years, it's gonna look like crap. It looks like crap now. It's the cheapest stuff that you could buy. He could have bought vinyl, he could have bought.
Jeff, there was a separate hearing.
He could have painted it.
We already showed up.
And then now.
Different hearing on this. It's about this fence. What about this fence do you disagree with?
And now, the first fence was for the trees. Now he wants to build a fence for the, for the dog.
And, and, you know. I haven't heard an intelligent argument to the contrary. What is, what is your pride?
It's because you're not smart enough to understand it.
No, you haven't articulated it yet. What is, what is your gripe? Why don't you?
It's not smart enough for you to understand. I gotta talk to them.
That's enough. This public hearing as of now is closed. Period. I will not tolerate it. I never have, and I never will.
Can I be able to appeal this?
I said enough is enough. We're getting no place with name-calling. And all we're here, he can legally put up the six-foot fence. All he's asking for is that little two-foot extent. That's all we're here for. Nothing else.
Why do you have laws if it says six-foot and he wants to put in an eight-foot?
Why do we have laws on a six-foot?
So that means everybody can put in an eight-foot fence now?
Generally speaking, any code in this port, where there's a lot of different codes, is a guideline. This port is designed, if a gentleman feels he needs two-foot extra, we have the power and the right to do it if we so see fit. That's a reason for it. That's why that gentleman is here tonight. It's not really complicated.
Well, I had to put my two cents in.
Questions from the board?
Can I appeal this?
Can you what?
Appeal it.
You can, sure.
How do you go by doing that?
You have to file an Article 78.
Yeah, how do you do?
Now take it to the Supreme Court. Am I correct?
You are, yes.
That probably costs too much. Not worth it.
Remember, sir, and I don't want to get in any, I have no contempt of anybody that's six-footed.
You're an idiot.
Okay, I'm gonna make sure my car isn't keyed, I'll be right back.
You're gonna make what?
I'm gonna make sure you leave your shit in my car.
Yeah, go fuck yourself. Hey, this guy's an idiot, you get him away from me.
I have no.
Fuck you, you fucking idiot.
All right. Chris, come on, guys. Be ready to touch on that one.
Or would you get this fucking guy away from me, please?
Why don't you, Maureen?
Chris, get up to the stand, sit and sit down. Let's go.
Can't fix everybody.
Cheryl, I may have to think about it.
Sorry. Okay. Yes.
All right, board. Any further discussion? What would you like to do? I would think we'll have to keep some of the comments I would say should. You can think of what you want, but some of the comments I don't want to, should he be a record or so ridiculous? We'll judge on the merits of whatever. Okay? So I'll read, I'll read the five statements. Okay? What an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance.
No, no.
No. Number two, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance.
No, I don't.
Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial.
Oh, no. Especially that slope.
That really is, six-foot's allowed, this is that much added.
Yeah, that slopes down so much in the back.
Well, that ditch is down much lower.
It's taller for that, wouldn't break for the tree earlier, the last.
Number four, whether proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district. Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. That can go either way, Jeff.
Yeah, it's self-created because he wants the extra two feet, but it's, but it's not that it's.
You want a slope, it's one, two feet more.
Okay. I'd make a, I'd make a motion that the application of Christopher Wegman at 29 Drake Road, seeking relief from town code 520-29B. He's looking for a, it says, no, no fence shall be erected in the rear yard higher than six feet above the highest point of ground directly below the fence. So I move that we give him a two-foot variance to allow an eight-foot fence being installed on his back property, on his back property line. That's the minimum variance allowed. It's a type-two seeker. We had people speaking in favor and other discussions were held during this public hearing. Type-two seeker.
Second. Motion made by Eddie Hay, seconded by Carol Roth to approve the application of Christopher Wegman, 29 Drake Road, for the added two-foot on top of the existing six-foot fence. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Carol Roth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Jonathan Vogler.
Aye.
Hearing, okay. Mr. Wegman, you're outside.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's all a time of service, all of this costs.
Say, Lord, great, you want to see him next time?
I will, yeah.
They're hanging that. These type of situations can be very. Okay, we'll move down to Dean Hess. Sorry for the.
Come on, a little entertainment's good. Yes.
Okay, Dean, what would you like to do?
I'm putting up a storage building beside my house, and I'm about 80-foot off the road where my house set back is about 130. That will enable me to not spend an absorbent amount in stone and everything else and run a separate electric feed back by jumping aerial, because I can grab the pole right there. That's really the two big reasons. I can, I have, you know, this sounds selfish. I have, with 80-foot, I can back in my truck and trailer, things like that, very comfortably. I don't need to go back further. I can cuff off the edge of my yard with topsoil and push the water out back. I don't bump into, the leach field is beside the house and have to work a little more creatively. That's why I set the building where I'm at.
Okay? Your leach field is to the east side of your house, correct?
That's correct.
And if you move the barn further back to the north, you would be getting closer.
Exactly, exactly. I was trying to play, I read the rules and stipulations. I was trying to make sure, that's why there's stakes everywhere. I was measuring this way and that way, just to be smart about it and putting it in a good spot for what I want.
Okay? This would be of a pole barn nature or steel building?
Yep, pole barn with a 12-foot shed roof coming off to the east side so I can slip my trailer underneath it. I actually dropped off the building plans earlier this week. So basically 32 by 50 or 32 by 48, two doors in the front and a door on the side under the shed roof. Because I'm gonna tinker by trade.
Yes, you are.
So.
Yeah, but a good one.
Well, you know, after 40 years, you gotta do something.
I think my old tractor's probably missing you already. Is there any other questions from the board members? I'm just surprised you're not building a dicker.
Well, no offense, it's up front, so I guess there's room out back, ain't there? You know, here's the thing. I'm going for a knee, I'm going for both hands, and if I work on larger equipment, that means I gotta crawl around more, so.
Any other questions? Do you have pullaways from East Black Line? Do you have a minute?
Yeah, 45 feet.
45.
Yep. That's why, yes, I had it all surveyed because back in the day when I split that up, it was the hedgerow, and you don't really know which side of the hedgerow you're at until you let the surveyor come in.
Okay. Any further questions? If not, at this point in time, open up your public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this proposal? Please give your name and address. Hearing no one, seeing no one, I declared his public hearing closed. Okay, board. What do you think? Any further questions or, it's pretty, you probably have the driveway.
Well, that's it. I've been using that area already as a, as a hard pack, and of course, it drops off. And, you know, to bring up the level, obviously, you keep throwing more if you, you want to go back further. So that's really why, you know, I set it where I felt comfortable from the distance, kept off the lot line well. That's pretty much it, you know?
All ready. Number one, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby property will be created by the granting of the area variance.
There's many other pole barns up and down that road.
In the middle of the farm country. Number two, whether the benefit sought by applicant can be achieved by some feasible method other than an area variance.
Technically, yes, realistically, no.
No, but I believe the leach field to the rear, it would be a factor. Pretty big one, actually. Number three, whether the requested area variance is substantial.
No, nothing.
Number four, whether the proposed area variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood district.
No.
Number five, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which consideration shall be relevant to the decision of the zoning board of appeals but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance.
One in the building, but otherwise location, no.
I have a question, Joe.
Sure.
He's got, it looks like already an existing shed on here. So that would be two.
He's an RBL.
Okay, so it's allowed.
Allowed, three.
Okay, all right, yep, solid, next question.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, the application of Dean Hess at 300 Ketchum Road, seeking relief from town code 527-C, no, C, for a detached garage. I give, all right, I move the application for a variance to build a non-agricultural storage barn in front of the main foundation of the house. We've gone through the five criteria. It's gonna be far enough off the setback on the, on the lot lines. There's been no negative comments during the public hearing. It's a type-two seeker.
Second. Motion made by Eddie Hay, seconded by Rocky Ellsworth to approve the application of Dean Hess, 300 Ketchum Road, for seeking a variance for building a non-agric, a private garage in front of the house. Clerk, please pull the vote.
Norman Baz.
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth.
Aye.
Carol Roth.
Aye.
Ed Hay.
Aye.
Jonathan Vogler.
Aye.
Hearing. Okay, Dean.
Very good. Thank you.
Good to go.
Sounds great. See Cheryl before you do it.
Okay. Now we go down to review of a coastal erosion agent area permit, Richard and Lisa Gudell, 19 Summer Haven Drive.
My name's Brian Covler, representing the Godals from Fitch Construction. Look, I can do the work. They'll look and add basically a three-season room on the existing deck that's there. They just want to put a three-season room so they can enjoy the view of the lake. But because it's in the coastal erosion mansion zone, we need to be here.
Yes.
No, we were there Saturday, you're just building over that existing deck.
We're actually rebuilding that. If you're there Saturday, somehow.
Just slants back around the house.
We're actually gonna tear that down and rebuild the deck.
Okay, and then, a bit of the same footprint?
Exact same footprint.
Okay. Okay.
Just, all right.
Yes, and you are. I didn't look at the measurements. You're kind of way back away from the lake, maybe forty, fifty foot?
We didn't walk out there, but it looks like there's a real good break wall up there.
They had that redone a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Because it was.
Sure.
Too bad.
From the deck area, isn't it?
Right.
Is there any further questions that... You've got quite a few pictures. You've got everything pretty much laid out. I have a memo here from the conservation board. In their statement, it's consistent with policies of LWRP and recommend a certificate of consistency be issued. So we're all set on the conservation board.
Let me, you want to go, let me do it?
No, you do have to, then.
Okay.
No, that's just a matter of...
It's only a gift to watch.
I'm sure you'd love to go.
Oh, yeah, good portrait.
Any further questions? I do, it looked to me like the deck probably does need some repair. Could any replace it?
Yeah.
Good times.
What is it?
It's good time to do it.
Oh. Yeah, you do have to do variance because it's just up front of the house. Usually it's on the back of the house because it's on the water. This is considered a fun. That's why you need a variance, right, for the...
But they're, but they're about eighty feet away from the lake, so they, they've already you have to be at least thirty-five feet from the lake. Okay.
So that, we don't need a variance. We just need to approve the...
Just need the approval.
I'd make the motion that the application of Richard and Lisa Gudell?
Gudell, I think it is.
Gudell?
Yeah.
They're, they're seeking a coastal erosion hazard area permit for the construction of a three-season roof that will encompass the existing footprint of, that will encompass the footprint of the existing deck, no larger than the existing deck. I'd make a motion to approve that permit.
Second. Motion made by Eddie Hay, second by Rocky Ellsworth, to approve a coastal erosion hazard area permit for Richard and Lisa Gudell, Nineteenth Summer Haven Drive. Clerk please call the vote.
Norman Baz?
Aye.
Rocky Ellsworth?
Aye.
Carl Rock?
Aye.
Eddie Hay?
Aye.
Jonathan Bovler?
Aye.
Carrie, okay, you're all set on that.
Awesome. Thank you. So we'll see you December sixth at seven o'clock.
Okay.
Okay, same room, same place. Okay, bye. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Well, thank you, Lord. They're ready for discussion.
Okay, I do have something that's for everybody to discuss. The end of the year is coming upon us, and we need to make a recommendation for chairperson to present to the town board. So you guys wanna take a couple of minutes and make Norman sweat a little bit? Do you think a straw pole?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the town board that Norman Baz be appointed chairperson of the zoning board of appeals for 2022.
Your hair just got a little wet. Your hair just got a little wet.
Rocky Ellsworth?
Aye.
Aye.
And Jonathan?
I wouldn't say it. At one point, I bet my butt pressure was...
Thirty points higher. I have nothing. I would apologize for the person. That, that terrible, we have to deal with something. And the problem is, I know a lot about what's been going on. This is, this is not a good thing over there, not at all. I opened for it, and it turns out okay. It's volatile.
But the, he was in for variance a few months ago, and we never, never saw or heard from him.
It's been getting much worse.
Yeah, yeah.
The last month, it's with all of them. And I don't know where it's gonna end up. Unfortunately. Other than that, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. Life's still good, even though we got a few people I don't agree with. Cheryl, are there anything new and exciting?
After tonight, no.
Okay. You got anything, Cindy?
Nope.
Jennifer, you're it, baby.
Okay. Couple of things. We did approve the 2022 budget. We'll be happy to know that the town tax rate decreased about 1.96% from like three ninety-six per thousand to three eighty-eight per thousand, roughly, thereabout. Just enough where you probably won't notice it when you get your tax.
But it sounds good.
We did do a resolution to opt out of cannabis retail dispensaries and onsite consumption. So we opted out of that. We had to do it by the thirty-first of December. We can always opt back in once the regulations are a little bit more formulated, a little more transparent. We can revisit it if it's something we wanted to opt into in the future. Scout Park down off of Brick Schoolhouse, the New York State Power Authority and Canal Corp, we got a grant down there for them to revamp that. So they're doing some cool stuff. They're gonna make the fishing platform a little bit more accessible, a little more public access. It's gonna be ADA compliant, too, and so they're making it bigger. They're gonna redo the bathrooms down there and make those ADA compliant. They are doing new landscaping and taking out a bunch of the dead ash trees. And they're gonna take the trail that exists now and turn it into an ADA compliant loop. And they're also gonna like do some new signage, I think, and paving the parking lot in front. So that's exciting. The LWRP revamp is moving right along. We should maybe be ready to submit that January, I think. And the farmland protection program is also moving along. Highway Department is taking brush again. You know, there was that little stint there where we weren't accepting any brush. They're accepting brush again, just not from contractors or landscaping companies. And the zoning workshops are canceled for the rest of the year. So January, I guess they will resume. And that's all I have.
Well, good. Well, thank you for that tip from you, Lord. Okay.
And happy Thanksgiving.
I don't know if I was saying what it is here.
Aye.
We didn't even ask the legal... Everything's ducky over here.
Yeah, we know that, you know, everything is ducky.
Absolutely.
The one thing that I, he took a screen...
Have a good one, Dean. Isn't life just awesome?
He took a screenshot on the training site. We were talking about...